Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brenner.
Could the sheriff please come down here? I have a couple, several little quick questions. Just because I did take notes when people were talking and I want, there's some questions I had too. What is this thing about another jail within a mile not being legal? I've never quite gotten that.
There's not another jail within a mile. The US Border Patrol has a station there and they have two holding cells.
So, holding cells are different.
That they can hold people for up to four hours until they're transported to Seattle, wherever they transport federal prisoners to. And from what I understand, those holding cells have never been utilized. They built them.
But they're different than a jail.
Right, that's not a jail.
Okay, so it would be two jails within a mile, is that?
You know, I'm not familiar with the Ferndale ordinance, but it's gone through the Ferndale staff and...
I didn't think it was the Ferndale ordinance. I thought what they were talking about was state law or something.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, all right. Have bail, is bail caught, is the, people paying bail, have their bails gone up in cost?
Our judges make the decisions on bail based on the risk the person presents to the community.
Oh, okay.
And the risk that they're not going to appear in court. Sheriff's office has nothing to do that, do with that. We've seen some bails go lower and some go higher, and we've seen deviations amongst the individual judges of how bails are set.
Okay. And somebody already answered, the property down the street is cheaper, but it's not zoned for this. This is definitely not a done deal, I want to assure people. But I brought up something today, I talked to you about it yesterday, and I brought it up in committee. And I have some other comments I want to make, because I do support buying the property if we are, if we'd have a clause in there that says if any significant pollution is found in the, in the initial construction phase, the previous owner will be liable. You know, I heard that as-is, where-is, thing over, when you read that thing today, and I'm, I'm very concerned as someone who had heard rumors for so many years that there was illegal dumping done there, that, and if, you know, I'm hopeful it's not, and I don't want it to be there, but I just feel like we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to have some wording in there, that the fellow who bought it, he knew the previous owner. And I know that there was information that the two of them had to have shared. So, that's one thing. I brought it up today in committee, and I would like a clause in there like that. I want to comment on some of the other comments that were brought up. The thing about mental health and drug court, we have a drug court. I don't believe we reduced funding to drug court. I know it came up, but it was my understanding it wasn't reduced.
The federal government reduced.
Yeah, well, that's not us, but we didn't reduce our funding to drug court. It was on an agenda item, but I, we spoke against it, I remember.
There's been a modest reduction in staffing, but Drug Court is fully operational and is able to handle as many people that want and qualify for the program.
Okay. And as, regarding the mental health court, I have been wanting mental health court for years. I'm bipolar, and I have been around some pretty sick people in my life. And I got to tell you, the mental health court would probably do more to save the taxpayers' money and do beneficial results for people who need, sorry, need to stay on their meds. And it's really hard because of some of the side effects of those medications. And I'm very sympathetic to people who have a hard time with that. But we need to have, you know, we need to have a robust, I love your word, robust mental health court, and we're working towards it, we are. And you're shaking your head, no. Yes, we are. Yes, we are. And that's something that I want. So, I know, we've talked about it and we are working on it. So, that's real important to me. And Drug Court, both of them, I think they're big alternatives. They would help with, they would not only help, but we are moving towards that stuff, whether we ever had a new jail or not. It's not one or the other. And that's what's bothering me. They, it keeps being brought up that it's one or the other, and it's not. In fact, one of the proposals, one of the option proposals for the beds are to have separate areas for people who can, you know, so that we can do some of the things that we couldn't do if they were in a real jail population. Maybe there's a different way to do it, but everything, you know, still has its costs, and I want to see the best results, especially, I'd rather go towards mental health court and make that be one of the best results, period. So, I'm very much there, and we talked about costs already, and I'm, I know who you are, and I'm expecting lots of help with that, because I'm going to be working on that, too. So, but, I do want that amendment about protecting.
Have you made an amendment?
I did.
Why don't you make one?
My amendment is to add to the purchase agreement, if any significant pollution is found in the initial construction phase, the previous owner is liable.
Executive Lyles, did you have a comment on that?
I do. I had the opportunity to call the real estate agent that's handling this for the sellers. He contacted the sellers, as per the request of Councilmember Brenner. The answer that came back was, is that their attorneys and the Wachem County attorneys in Wachem County has put together a very solid purchase and sale agreement that identifies everybody's responsibilities. And they, within that is, is we had a year to do our due diligence as it relates to the property, which is standard practice. We have done that due diligence. Our CEPO official Tyler Schroeder, I think this afternoon, gave a very good example of that. But for anybody's information, November 12, 2008, Wachem Environmental did a test pit sample of the property in various different locations. We're willing to pass that out. We had members of the community that questioned the results of those studies, and were questioning whether the site was without, without contamination. As I mentioned, we spent quite a few tens of thousands of dollars in the past months reaffirming the work that has been done and doing some new test, test results. Everything has come back 100% clean. So, it's my recommendation that we move forward with the purchase and sale as agreed upon for the $6,93,491 acquisition price. So, I think that at this, at this late date, knowing that we have done our due diligence and knowing standard real estate practices, is that I would recommend that the council does not authorize that additional language into the contract documents.
Okay. Councilmember Brenner?
This isn't our standard anything. This is the most expensive purchase we're going to make when you, when we get it all done. And I just feel like the taxpayers, if, if the executive is correct, and I, like I said this afternoon, I don't question what he believes. I just, I remember hearing enough about illegal dumping there that I don't expect, I don't expect it to ever be a problem, but I really feel like we should have that clause in there. So, I'm sticking to it.
Councilmember Knutson?
Well, I have a separate question, but I'm no environmental lawyer, so I'm not familiar with this stuff. But I do have some experience with people buying commercial properties that had something on the property that was done by the previous owner. And if there was illegal dumping, they would be responsible for it, is my understanding.
What if it was done before they owned it?
Well, the party that did it would be responsible for it.
He's dead.
Well, okay, I'm just, so, that, that being said, there's so many rumors about all this stuff that, you know, I think we've done a lot of VIS studies and whatnot. My concern was, one of the, one of the people brought forward something about setbacks, that we had reduced the setbacks.
But before, before you move on to that, let's vote on Councilmember Brenner's motion to amend, to include that language.
There was a, there was a motion?
That's my motion. She made me make a motion.
Yeah, and then we'll come back, and we can talk about the setbacks. Okay, anybody else have any comments on Councilmember Brenner's motion to amend, to include language, what I said, what you said? Do you want to discuss it?
Very briefly.
Councilmember Kremen?
Very briefly, Madam Chair, and it is, it's been a long day. You know, I, I concur with the intent which the amendment is being offered, but I also concur with Councilmember Knutson. I believe, and I'm not a lawyer, and I see where our legal counsel is no longer with us this evening, but I think under the, under the EPA and the Brownfield, we may, I, I think that Councilmember Knutson is correct in that whoever owned the property during the time in which the, the pollution or contaminants were, you know, for lack of a better word, were deposited, they would be ultimately responsible. That's my understanding. So, I think that the amendment offered by Councilmember Brenner is, is unnecessary.
Councilmember Brenner?
Well, I respectfully disagree, just because what it says, the wording is "as-is." As-is means it could have anything. And I hear, that is so far back, I mean, we're talking 30 years ago is when I was hearing these concerns. And I, I'm not, and I don't know, the, the person who owned the property is dead. I don't know where you'd go to get that money from who.
And we're all talking hypothetical here. There's no known pollution on the property.
No, not that I know. I just want to cover.
So, we're, I just want to make sure the audience knows that we're talking hypothetical.
Hypothetical.
Okay.
I want to cover the taxpayers here.
Okay. So, anybody else have a comment on Councilmember Brenner's motion to amend? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of Councilmember Brenner's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That fails with Councilmember Brenner in support. Okay, Councilmember Knutson?
Yeah. Somebody mentioned Ferndale had reduced the setbacks or something on this, and I'm just curious, looking at the sighting, what we were presented from the jail folks, it looks to me like from any property line, the setbacks were something like a couple hundred feet.
But they were 350 before.
Well, what, what, any idea, are any of the setbacks on the proposed sighting less than 300 feet from any adjacent property that has, well, I guess, any kind of housing or anything on it?
The original Ferndale code had the setback to a correctional facility being at 350 feet.
Yeah.
They went through a public hearing process and a code change process this summer, and they reduced that 350 to 250 feet. Now, there is stipulations that were attached to that in terms of to be able to go to that 250 for privacy screening, visual viewing of prisoners so that they couldn't look out, lighting, a list of conditions that we needed to comply with to be able to make that 250 work. The jail planners put together the original footprint of the facility using the 350-foot setback. It does work using the 350 feet, but it gives us a little bit more flexibility in terms of design value going to the 250. I would guess that that will be something that we'll be engaging with, with our designers after we figure out how we're going to pay for it and we start engaging them in the final design of it, of figuring out what the exact setbacks are going to be, to be able to utilize the property most efficiently. The property's got quite a slope from the front to the back, and the farther you move the thing back is, is you get into, you get into some more difficult grading issues. So, there's going to be a balance of where we want to set that within the 250 to the 350-foot mark.
Okay. Councilmember Brenner?
Well, I can't speak for the city of Ferndale, but I do know that we said very strongly that we wanted to be sure that the concerns of the neighbors were not only listened to, but were incorporated. And when we get to the design part, if this passes, if we get to the design part, I'm not going to support 250 feet. I'm only going to support 350. I think we owe it to the neighbors of the property, period.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this item? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution to authorize the executive to purchase the La Bounté Road property for the purpose of constructing a new Wachem County jail and sheriff's headquarters, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Councilmember Brenner, that passes six to one. Councilmember Brenner opposed.
I'd like to take a moment to thank the, the council and the team and the community for engaging in this. I know that it's not to everybody's satisfaction that, that this transaction is taking place, but, but I am pleased that we were able to work through it over the last two years, and I'm looking forward to taking the next steps in the next few months to engage the community and the electeds around to try to figure out a plan of, of paying for it and re-engaging in the, the size and the scope of the facility so that we can do the best job possible for the community, making sure that the neighborhood is cared for in the, in the best way possible, and taking the time to study alternative, alternative ways to look at how we treat and respect the people that we have incarcerated to do the best job that we can to get them back out as productive members of the community. So, I thank you for this big decision tonight. I know that it's, it's a lot of dollars, and it's a major step forward in building what I think the majority of us think, know that we need is, is we need a new correctional facility. So, thank you so much.
You are welcome, and thank you for doing the work and bringing it to us. In four years, we've got a site. I hope it doesn't take four years to get it built, Sheriff Velfo.
Okay.
Councilmember Kremen?
Thank you, and I appreciate your indulgence. I, I want to emphasize the fact that the action that we just took is not indicative that the county or the administration is engaged in a done deal, because nothing could be further from the truth. We're going to have a, I'm sure we're going to have an arduous, meaningful, and probably lengthy public discussion about this, this proposed jail. And it's, this is not a done deal. And I also want to say that if and when this jail were to be realized and constructed and finally utilized, I, I think it's imperative that the correctional system here in Wachem County take to heart the Restorative Community Coalition and people that are of like mind, because I think we need to emphasize and focus on alternatives to the traditional correctional system that not just Wachem County has been using, but pretty much every county in the entire country has been using, that has demonstrated that it is a system that does not yield results that we would like to. So, I, I think that, as Councilmember Brenner said, the mental health court works. I've seen it firsthand, in person, in Cook County. The council members there are very proud of that system, and there are programs like that, and many others, that we can use in conjunction with a correctional facility of the traditional type and protect the community in a much better and much more effective way.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Kremen. All right, moving on, we've got item number six. This is from the Planning and Development Committee. Councilmember Knutson?
Yes, we had a discussion and recommendation to council acting as the Wachem County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors, Supervisors regarding representation on the Wymer One planning unit. And it was a, quite a discussion, and I think Councilmember Brenner might have a recommendation out of this.
Councilmember Brenner?
I have a motion. I move that the county appoint a member of the Flood Control District Board of Supervisors to be a voting member on the planning unit. Because the, as that, as such, the Board of Supervisors actually really has an awful lot to do with what is done with water quality, water quantity, stormwater facilities, all kinds of things, and I think it's extremely important. And I would like, in, in addition to that, I'd like the, I think, I talked to Chris Bruski about this, I would like somebody to consider having county staff as a, as a technical advisory position instead of a voting position. So, we wouldn't really would be increasing positions, we would, Chris is a wealth of information. He's really good. And personally, I might be wrong, but I don't think he wants to be a voting member.
Councilmember Kremen?
I support Councilmember Brenner's, is this an amendment that you just made?
A motion.
Motion. I support her motion wholeheartedly.
All right. Any other discussion? Councilmember Mann?
This, there may not be an easy answer to this question, but do we have the authority to do that?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yes.
Did we originally, did the council originally appoint people to Wymer One?
I thought it was a state, it's a state law. Was it the state or the county?
But it's a local wire, and we do have the authority to put, we have the authority to appoint members to fill different water quality, water quantity slots.
Especially if they're affiliated with the county.
Yes.
Mr. Bruski, this is Executive Lyles, Mr. Bruski in the hall before, before the meeting asked me that if this came up, that, that the council give us the opportunity to run that by our legal team as to what, what the council can do in terms of appointments on and to the, to the, the planning body. Because it was put together by the county and the joint board in the original establishment of it. We all know that the planning unit has their own process at this time. So, all, all I'm asking at this particular time is, is that we would give us until December 10th to take a look at this, and then come back to you with a recommendation. Other than that, if you feel that you have the legal authority to do it, then you take action on it tonight.
Councilmember Kremen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, with all due respect, Mr. Executive, it seems pretty elementary and obvious to me that the county has every bit of authority to determine who represent, who is its official representative, and I mean by voting member, on, on the planning unit. I don't think, I don't think there's any question about it whatsoever. I mean, it's just, it's just like whatever organization or group is represented on the planning unit, aside from the county, they have the authority to select who's going to represent them. So, I, I don't think that there's any ambiguity or any uncertainty whether or not the county council has the, has the authority to appoint the individual who's going to be the voting member representing the county. So, I, I, I really think, I would like to vote on it this evening, if the, you know, will of the majority of the council agrees with me. I think that that would, we have a lot of things going on and, in, on the last meeting of the year, and I don't see any reason to defer action until the next meeting. I, I think it can be done this evening, and would like to see it done.
So, you're, excuse me, you're appointing for a Wachem County representative, then? So, we've moved away from the Flood Control Zone District?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about Wachem County.
Okay.
The, the entity, but, you know, the, yeah.
Well, earlier today, it came up in the context of being a member of the Flood Control Zone District. That's the, just so you know.
Well, that, okay. All right. Yes. I mean, it's just like we're the Health Board as well. So, yeah, okay, so, yeah, the Board of Supervisors, that a member of the Board of Supervisors be, that a member of the Board of Supervisors be the voting member representing the county, or the Board of Supervisors.
Representative Board of Supervisors. Right. Councilmember Wymer, and then Mann?
I guess I just want to make sure I understand the motion, because I think Ms. Brenner talked about replacing the council, or the county representative that currently sits on the planning unit with a member from this body, which would be the flood zone or the county, I guess, either way.
I'm not saying, I still want Chris to serve as a technical, as a member.
But we'd have one vote, not two votes.
One voting. Yeah, exactly. I wasn't trying to increase the votes.
I guess I, I'm going to vote against the motion, just because I want to support the executive's idea that we come back and have a more robust discussion of this in December, because even Mr. Richards today, when he talked to us, said this was going to go to the planning unit on December, I can't remember what it is, 17th or 18th, because they had to vote whether they wanted to expand the planning unit or not. So, I don't understand all the legal implications of who can and can't be on the planning unit. And personally, after sitting on the planning unit, I, I think it makes more sense to have our professional water staff as our representative there with constant input from us than to have one of the council members.
Councilmember Mann?
I would just say, nothing about the planning unit has ever been elementary or obvious or easy to sort out. I mean, we've been struggling with all manner of disagreements over various iterations of, of this. I don't really care if it's a technical advisory board member or if it's a council member, or if it's a Board of Supervisors member. I really don't have a strong preference who does it, as long as it's somebody that everyone, and the, you know, that the county legislative body, along with some consultation with the executive, believes is a good representative. But, you know, and I, I don't know if it was supposed to originally be a member of the administration, or, you know, the, the executive branch, or the legislative branch to appoint it. So, that's why I asked the question, like, do we have that authority? And I, I agree that on the face of it, it seemed like, yes, the county should be able to appoint whoever we want. But I'd rather just wait and get some clarity before we muddy the planning unit any further, you know, with just another question mark.
So, my understanding is that we would be appointing somebody from the Flood Control District Board of Supervisors as a, as a government, that is its own government, not as the county. And we would not be taking the county position. We would be nominating somebody from that Board of Supervisors.
But then, how would that person replace?
It wouldn't replace. I don't think it would replace Mr. Bruski. Councilmember Kremen?
To clarify, Councilmember Mann, Mr. Bruski would still participate, attend the meetings as a staff support person. meetings as a staff support person, not as the county representative. And the reason, the reason, I think, well, I know the reason why I believe we, it should be a member, a Board of Superv, you know, one of the Board of Supervisors, is that we are, we represent the, the planning unit in total. We are their elected legislative representative. And I don't think it should be that a staff person representing the executive branch. The executive branch has a seat on the, on the joint board. And so therefore, and the whole purpose of the planning unit, the way I understood it and understand it today, is that the, the planning unit is to be represented by the county to the, to the, the joint board. And there's no, it just makes sense that it be an elected representative who is accountable to the, of the people of Watcom County collectively, whether they're, whether they're a tribal member, whether they're a farmer, whether they're a Water Association member, or whatever. We represent everyone, and that, that's the whole purpose of the planning unit. And I think it should be somewhat divorced from the joint board. So that, that's my explanation and rationale for my position.
Okay, Councilmember Brenner, state your motion again clearly, clearly.
Okay. My motion is that the Watcom County Flood Zone District Board of Supervisors appoint a member to the Wyra Planning Unit.
As the voting member.
As the, as a voting member, yes.
Okay.
In place of the.
I'm not going there, that's, that's something that will be figured out in the future.
As a matter of fact, I think it should say, as the voting member, not a voting member, as the, because then it, then it.
As the voting member representing the Flood Control Zone Board of Supervisors. Is that repetitive enough? Okay.
All right, Councilmember Wymer?
So with that motion, the county still has two votes on the planning unit.
Well, I'm hoping to change that at another.
Because you said it's the vote of the flood control, so maybe it takes two motions, one to remove from, with our county council hats on, to remove the county representative.
Well, that's a different issue, and I do want to discuss that, but to me, it's a separate motion.
So we're adding another voting member?
No, why don't, you know what? If I may, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Cremmon?
I think, to clarify it, and I, I don't have the verbiage, but the intent is to be the voting member representing the Board of Supervisors and the county. And then that takes, and that means you only have one vote.
Amendment, just so it clarifies it for, because I'm fine with that.
The problem is, is that we have two different governments here, and I don't think we can take one vote with.
Yeah, I think we need to just do it for the Board of Supervisors, period.
You should look for two weeks on the clarification.
I'm clear, I'm very clear.
Okay, you know, it's late. I, I yield. I succumb.
So let's ask, so, so the clarification that, that might be useful here, the clarification is, would we have two mem, two voting members if we were to appoint a Board of Supervisor? And does the planning unit need to approve the membership? And, no, you don't think so?
No, they don't approve the membership of the other groups.
I'm just saying that was a question that was asked. Somebody, somebody asked if we had the authority, and I think it's, if we're gonna, if we're gonna get clarification, let's get all the questions answered, so on the 10th, we have all those questions answered. And you may be certain.
Well, I am certain that the different groups decide for them, they form their own little thing and have meetings to decide who represents that group.
Okay.
But nobody else has anything to do with that.
Okay. Well, waiting for two weeks to find out the answers to how this might work.
I'm, I'm going to say, let's vote tonight. We can get more information so we can figure out about Chris, Chris's, to me, that's sort of a different issue. It's an addition, but it's a different issue, and I want to get that clarified, and I'm fine getting more information on all this stuff, but I want to vote on this.
So your motion stands without Councilmember Cremmon's last minute word change regarding Board of Supervisors and County Council? Because I can't support both.
Right, we can't do it, we'd have to, we can only do it with one hat at a time. So, if you want it to be the council too, we can do that.
You know, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Cremmon?
I have a high regard for our clerk. And it appears that our clerk feels that it would be in the best interests of all to defer further action on this issue until the December 10th meeting, to get clarity, hopefully, from our legal counsel regarding this matter.
So are you moving to hold this until?
Yes, I am.
December 10th? Okay. So we need to vote on that? So all those in favor of holding this idea, this motion, until December 10th, say aye. Aye opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Brenner. But that passed six to one, Councilmember Brenner opposed. So we'll get the answers and come back to it.
Yep.
All right. All right, so item number seven, this had no committee assignment, we have a resolution identifying 2014 and 2015 salaries and benefits for Watcom County council members. And I need a motion for approval.
I'll move approval.
Councilmember Mann moves approval. Councilmember Brenner?
I just want to say for the record, this was, these were the salaries created by the Salary Commission, that was a public vote by the public to produce the commission and their, and their votes. So this was done by the Salary Commission, not by the county council.
All right, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye. Aye opposed? That passes seven to zero. And we're on to introduction items, and it looks like we've got four introduction items. The last item was added to the agenda. That's the ordinance amending the 2014 Watcom County budget third request in the amount of $326,000. Is there a motion to accept the introduction items?
I move to accept them.
All right, they've been moved for acceptance. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, that passes seven to zero. Is there any other business? Okay.
Oh, I'm just going to throw it out there. I'm not sure now, after talking to Councilmember Cremmon, what I, how I, I want, I want to put on the, on the agenda for next meeting, a discussion on the EDI money that we talked about for the West Bakerview project. If in fact, we need it for stormwater facilities that already are in existing need for, for what exists, I am fine with it. But if it's to do more stormwater facilities for a future mega mall in Costco, I'm definitely not in support. So I need to get more information. But I was going to do it, and then I spoke to Councilmember Cremmon, and he, he feels, and I respect his opinion, that this is for existing stormwater problems.
No, no, it is not.
It's not?
No.
Councilmember Crawford?
The permitted, the, the development that is there today has the stormwater treatment that is required for that development.
Including the, everything there that's, that's existing now?
All the new stuff.
Oh.
All the new stuff that's permitted today.
Right.
There's no, Costco's not permitted, the shopping center's not permitted, the streets aren't permitted.
Okay.
So, so the stormwater is for things coming up, it's not for anything to do with what exists now. So.
Well, then, I would, I would like to put that on the agenda for the meeting in two weeks, as an, introduce it tonight, discussion and vote on whether to continue with EDI funding for the West Bakerview.
So you would move to reconsider that decision?
To reconsider, yes, that's a good one, yeah.
Let me, can I throw?
Councilmember Crawford?
Yeah, I wasn't going to bring anything up about this tonight, because it's late, but since you brought up stormwater, the mayor of Bellingham was quoted in the newspaper the day after our last meeting two weeks ago as saying, we have no, what's the phrase she used? We have no.
Plan?
Second, yeah, there was no second alternative. In other words, the question was asked by the reporter, what, what will you do if you don't get the funding from the county? And she said, there's no Plan B, that was it, there, there is no Plan B. When this discussion is, I, I won't go into all the details of it, but as I have already informed you, came before the Transportation Improvement Board, during our work session on Thursday last week, Ted Carlson was asked the same question and said, yes, the city will fund one way or another that stormwater facility regardless. Obviously, that's, that was a big question for the Transportation Improvement Board, because if the funding for stormwater, which a big part of it's going to be these roads, wasn't there, then why would we fund the roads? So when pressed for details on that, he said, well, we already have a, a stormwater utility fund in the city that's well-funded. He talked about some bonding scenarios. He named two or three things right off the top of his head that they could do it. I, I don't want to say all that, though, in the context that I think we should or should not fund stormwater. I think, I think at some point, I would assume the city's going to come back and say, well, County Council, what are you going to do? And I, I was thinking the ball was kind of in their court. You know, we have already informed the city what, or at least, my take on it is, we've informed the city what we would like to move forward with that, and that would be traffic information, not information about stormwater. And, you know, if they want to come forward and give us the traffic studies, and particularly the part, you know, where the mayor of Ferndale said that 45% of the traffic coming south was going to be exiting at Slater and using Pacific Highway, but in another portion of that, he said that would equate to 15 cars per hour during the peak traffic period. I think he points out an anomaly there that has not been figured. So I'll tell you this much, it's not just us in the city of Bellingham, the State Transportation Improvement Board in granting the money, and I, I don't know how clear I was in my letter, is not saying these issues don't exist and not ignoring those. And the State Transportation Improvement Board will be watching this closely too. So those answers still need to come forward, and in my mind, if the city comes knocking and saying, okay, County Council, did you guys make a final decision or not yet? I think the answer is yes, our decision was that we wanted to understand the traffic issues before we funded it. So I don't, I don't think it's timely right now to make a decision and have a vote on whether or not we do it. I think the merits of the stormwater project stand, stand on their own, and EDI funds are in appropriate use for that. But we conditioned, as I understood it, or at least, I don't think we took a formal vote, but I, I believe in that meeting two weeks ago, all seven of us said we weren't necessarily against the, the stormwater, but we wanted more information about both Bakerview and Slater and Pacific Highway. And when the city chooses to come forward with that information, we could progress from there.
I think we have taken formal action. On October 8th, we voted as a council to approve the EDI money to the city of Bellingham.
We did.
No, I thought that was to request the executive prepare the contract.
Oh.
That's true.
That's right.
Okay.
If I may, what it does is that it approves it, and then, it's always been a two-step process, is, is you approve the funding and you instruct the administration to put the contracts together. At this point, we are putting the contracts together, and the city of Bellingham is aware that there's been a request for more traffic information. I would, I don't think that the agreements will be ready to go in two weeks, and I don't know whether they're prepared to come and do the, do an expanded traffic explanation to the council, but everybody is aware that when these contracts do come before you, which would probably be at about the first of the year, just after the first of the year, that they're going to have to do an expanded explanation of the traffic in, in the area. So although it would be nice in two weeks to bring it up for discussion, I think that it would probably be appropriate to wait, and as Councilmember Crawford mentioned, appropriate to wait until Bellingham is ready to come with that traffic information, we'll have the contracts there, and we can take care of it as, as one comprehensive discussion, and then hopefully a decision related to it.
Okay. Councilmember Cremmon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you prepare the contract, Mr. Executive, I would like the administration to confer with your Public Works Department and anticipate and document any likely transportation infrastructure improvements that are going to be needed in order to accommodate the projected development in the Bakerview area that will impact county infrastructure, and add that, and, and get a commitment from the, the city of Bellingham that they will pay for that infrastructure. I don't, well, that's right, we're not going to get it.
They've made it clear, they're not.
Well, it's, we're taking, we're taking county money.
There's a, there's a difference here, though, of legal opinion. They, they don't believe legally they can. We believe legal, well, I'm sorry, the mayor of Ferndale believes legally they can, that they can use traffic impact fees for projects outside of their municipality. Bellingham is.
Well, they can use general fund money, they can, I mean, they can use, it doesn't matter, they buy property in the Lake Watcom watershed that isn't in the city to protect the, the watershed. I mean, yeah, I, I feel very strongly about this, because this, this is county taxpayer money that we are shifting into the city of Bellingham, and we've already given them, I, I think we've already allocated $1.1 million for them for the waterfront redevelopment. And, and I think their, their request, especially for the whole enchilada, for, for the county to spend, is $3 million, isn't it? 2.5?
Yeah, two-thirds alone, one-third clear.
And I just, I, I think it's, it's just, it goes against my grain, because the people that are going to be paying all the revenue, or at least half of the revenue approximately, that the city's going to generate by this development in the Bakerview area, is going to be paid for by non-Bellingham residents that reside in unincorporated and other municipalities of Watcom County. And I think it's, it's unfair. If they think, you know, if they want that revenue generator, then they need to step up to the plate and pay for the infrastructure that's going to adversely impact other jurisdictions, instead of having it the other way around, where the other jurisdictions are going to not only give them the money to develop Bakerview area, but then, after it's built, then pay all, you know, significant amounts of, of taxpayer money that's going to stay inside the city of Bellingham without any opportunity to have any representation whatsoever. It just goes against my grain, and it's, it, it's, it's a real, it's, it's pretty audacious, in my opinion.
Maybe they can share the tax revenue with the county, from all the sales generated in that area.
If there's a mess, there's a mess.
Well, but if we got 1% of their.
Mess?
No, yeah.
Again, I would.
1% of their money that they are going to get. Councilmember Crawford?
Well, I'll just restate it, I, I think it would be appropriate to wait at this point. I have little doubt the city is still going to be requesting the money, and at that point that they request. point that they request, they are aware of our concerns, and specifically what we've asked for to address those concerns. In addition, since we had the discussion, we have a mayor of Ferndale that has written a letter with, you know, expounding on some of those concerns. And I have let the city council people that I've been talking to know that his concerns in his three-page letter should be addressed also with a formal response from the city. So again, I feel the ball's in their court, and until they take some action or make a further request, that we don't need to do anything at this point.
Okay. Councilmember Brenner?
I just want to add, we keep separating city-county, but it's city-county government. I'm getting a whole lot of concerns raised by phone calls and emails and everything. They're all from people who live inside the city of Bellingham. So this is not, it may be Bellingham city government wants to do it, but the, there's a, I haven't had one person, oh yeah, we did get that one letter from the engineering company that's going to do the work, saying, oh yeah, the traffic's gonna be terrible, but support it anyway. I was, I found that shocking, you know? It's like, that was the only one in, in support of it. It was so ridiculous. Sorry.
Okay, any other business?
Do we have a motion on the floor to reconsider?
Well, we do, but I thought maybe Sam's comments, we maybe reconsider. I like having a message there in writing to the city. I think we made our, our concerns pretty well-known, and I'm not opposed to doing that. I, you know, the fact that we're gonna get a contract coming to us is another bite at the apple. But I'm for, I'll, I would support reconsideration. I, what, I mean, I'll go with the majority of the council on this. I would support reconsidering it, and that wouldn't stop them from making their case to us. So-
Councilmember Mann?
I would say that I raised this exact question and issue in committee when the mayor and the director were here. And no one at that time felt prepared to, to make a motion to reconsider right then. But I felt like, in summary, at the time, I said to the mayor, you know, you're, you're on notice, like, you've heard our conversation. There's a lot of concern up here. I don't think, by any stretch, she's taking, taking it for granted that we're gonna give that money just because we don't formally reconsider it. You could formally reconsider it. I, I, I see why you would want to do that. But since we didn't do it that day, I feel a little bit weird doing it right, right now. And I, I don't think the message changes all that much.
My motion is to put it on for introduction, to work, to make a decision in two weeks.
Introduce-
For two weeks.
To reconsider it in two weeks?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, then that's a little different.
So, that'd be fine.
Yeah, go ahead and introduce it.
That's my motion.
Well, so you wanna, okay, so you want to talk about it in two weeks?
And, and make a decision as to whether we want to reconsider, whether we want-
But we won't have had time to hear from the city if they are able to pull together-
Impossible vote.
Impossible vote.
In finance?
No.
Oh, all right. Public Works.
Do you want to have a, do you want a committee of the whole?
We already did it in finance.
Either committee of the whole or Public Works, I don't care. No, I don't want to just do, I want to have time to have an, you know, a discussion in evenings. We can bring it forward in the evening and talk about it more, but I do want it in committee first. And my preference would be finance logically, but other than that, it could be committee of the whole, or-
Your committee.
Or Public Works.
My committee, absolutely, which Ken's on, too, so you're not gonna get out of it.
No, I don't, I thoroughly, totally plan to engage and be present. I, I just don't, I didn't want it in my committee, again, because we already did it in my committee.
All right.
And chose at that time not to-
Public Works.
Can I, if your committee's full, which I can't remember if it is or not, can I move it to a committee of the whole?
Committee of the whole, either, yeah, depending on the schedule.
Is there interest amongst everybody to have it in committee?
That'll be part of my motion, depending on scheduling.
Okay.
Oh, queen.
And my committee is probably gonna be pretty packed next week, anyway.
Yeah, okay. Is this something we have to vote on as a council? Okay. All right. All those in favor of Councilmember Brenner's motion to bring this up for discussion in the Public Works Committee or the next most appropriate committee, depending on schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that passes five to two. Councilmember Crawford and Wymer opposed. Any other business? All right. Any reports from council members? Councilmember Crawford? Councilmember Kremm?
I'm gonna withhold mine.
Councilmember Brenner?
Nope.
I would just like to say that Thursday is the 150th anniversary of Thanksgiving in our country. It was proclaimed by President Abraham Lincoln when we were in the midst of the Civil War. And he asked our country to come together and give thanks for all that we had been given by our almighty Father. And I just hope and wish everybody out there has a very happy Thanksgiving.
Aww. Councilmember Mann?
I wanted to report that I was the emcee for another charity auction a couple weeks ago for hospice, Watcom Hospice Foundation. And they raised nearly double what they raised the year before. And also Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Services, DVSS, had their gala the same weekend. And they raised double what they raised the year before. So I just wanted to point that out, and I think that's really a good sign and a credit to our community.
Councilmember Knutson?
Well, it doesn't look like we have anybody from Public Works still here. But last week, we, I had attended the Puget Sound Partnership's ECB board meeting, and it looks like we're gonna have more stormwater money that is going to be, being dispersed. And I'm hoping that the county will take advantage of some of that, so.
Good. Councilmember Wymer?
Nothing.
Nothing to report. All right. Well, thank you very much. The meeting's adjourned.